Here.
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 Here, all persons present. Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all. Mr. Fisher, would you please come forward? I have to point this to the following. For about thirty years or so, I have been teaching Sunday School class. And beginning of that, thirty years ago, a lot of kids would come after church, go to the class, and they'd be dressed for some sport. They'd go to some sport. At that point in time, most of them were guys. While this time has gone by, a fair number of young girls have shown up in various summer uniforms. Last spring, Victoria came in one day, and she was dressed kind of like this a little bit. She was running for a club. I said, "What are you doing?" And she goes, "Oh, I'm running on the track." And I said, "Oh, that's good." And then next week, I say, "Actually, there's..." She goes, "Oh, one." I said, "Good, good." And I thought, "Oh, okay." All right. And now, about a month or so ago, I read the paper, and I find out that as a freshman, she has garnered some incredible honors. And I said, "You know, this is a good thing. If you recall last spring, we honored our baseball team that won the county." So I only thought it was appropriate, since Victoria, as a freshman, won the county cross-country championships, she should be recognized. The problem we have is she's only a freshman, so will probably be here for three more years. Maybe that's a good problem, right? Let me read this. "Victoria. Whereas Victoria Van Reel is a freshman at Governor Livingston High School, a member of the cross-country team; and whereas Victoria specializes in the 800-meter race, winning at the USA Track and Field Junior Olympic Nationals, held in California in the summer of 2016; and whereas Victoria won the Mountain Conference Cross-Country Championship with a personal best; and whereas Victoria helped propel her team to the Union County Cross-Country Championships, where she became Governor Livingston's first varsity individual cross-country champion since 2008, and the first female champion since 2002; and whereas the Governor Livingston Cross-Country Team ran in the NJA/IAA Sectional Two, Group Two Sectionals, with team victories advancing into the Group Two Championships; and whereas as a result of Victoria's successful Group Two Championship race, she achieved one of her freshman-year goals by qualifying for the NJA/IAA Meet of Champions; and whereas with her dedication, hard work, and athleticism, Victoria Van Reel brought recognition to herself, Governor Livingston High School, and our community. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor, the township council, the township Berkeley Heights, that is hereby recognized as Victoria Van Reel for her outstanding athletic achievements during the 2016 fall cross-country season, and wishes her continued success during her There is two other proclamations that I'm just going to read. The recipients moved last night, left our town after many, many years of service. And they were Bob and Karen Miller, who both moved to North Carolina to be near their children and grandchildren. And they kind of slipped away in the dark of night. I thought they were going to be leaving tomorrow, which is why we had this done. So I still think it's appropriate that I read it, and we will forward it down to them in their new location, somewhere near Chapel Hill, I believe, in North Carolina. Whereas Robert and Karen Miller were residents of Berkeley Heights for over forty years, raised their two daughters here; and whereas Bob has been involved for many years in local government, serving as a member of the township committee for six years, mayor for one, planning board for one year, and the Union County Planning Board for six years; and whereas Bob served as a member of the Board of Adjustment for twenty-four years, holding positions of chairman and vice chairman, gaining respect and gratitude from junior members of the Board; and whereas in addition to his service on the Board of Adjustment, Bob always found the time to volunteer at the other township events, such as tree lighting ceremonies and the Memorial Day Parade; and whereas Bob resigned from his position as vice chair of the Board of Adjustment in 2016, so that he and Karen could enjoy retired life at their new home in North Carolina; and whereas the mayor and township board, it is appropriate to recognize volunteers who devote their time and talents to our community, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and township council, the township Berkeley Heights, is hereby for itself and for all residents of the township publicly thank Robert Miller for his many years of volunteers and dedication and service. And also, whereas Karen and Robert Miller are residents of Berkeley Heights for over forty years, raised their two daughters here; and whereas Karen has been involved with the community for many years by volunteering in various capacities, such as Girl Scout leader, booster club member, PTO member; and whereas Karen served as a member of the Library Board for eighteen years, holding different positions, most recently as the vice president; and whereas in addition to their service with the Berkeley Heights Public Schools and on the Library Board, Karen always found the time to volunteer at other township events, such as tree lighting ceremonies and the street fair; and whereas Karen resigned from her position as vice president of the Library Board in November 2016, so that she and Bob could enjoy retired life at their new home in North Carolina; and whereas the mayor and township council board, it is appropriate to recognize volunteers who devote their time and talents to our community, now therefore be resolved that the mayor and township council, the township Berkeley Heights, does hereby for itself and for all residents of the township publicly thank Karen Miller for her many years of volunteers and dedication and community service. So I want to personally thank both the Millers. They have been tremendous citizens of this town, and I'm sure we all wish them a great time during their retirement. Okay. Conference session.
Ed? Mayor Quon. I hope this is the appropriate place to discuss this. Being on the Environmental Commission, the past meeting, there was a proposal forward for solar panels at the Reynolds Hospital. I don't know if anyone's familiar with it. But involved in it is cutting acres and acres of trees to put the solar panels up. And it's on the hill, and I believe the Environmental Commission as a whole reject, you know, sent a negative thing on it, which, you know, it's not a good thing for the environment. But I think as a town, I hope that this gets rejected, because, you know, number one, it harms a lot of things with the environment by cutting so many trees down. They could easily put the solar panels on the parking lot if they needed to. Cutting the trees down does not help, and also, it will affect somewhat our township, but also all of the towns downstream from that, which would be the Diamond Hill area and south through Scotch Plains, North Plainfield, Plainfield, that stream, I think it's the blue book and the green book, go down that way. So it's not a good thing, and it will create erosion on the hill. And I'm concerned about it. I hope the rest of the town would be concerned enough about it to hopefully, you know, reject it. I don't know if we should propose to the other towns to inform them. I don't know if any towns downstream from there would be, you know, they'd be affected. I don't know if they'd be informed that this would be going on, but...
Eddie, I'm trying to see that in my mind's eye. They have solar panels there right now, do they not?
They have small ones...
They have them in the park. They already have them in the parking lot.
They're in the parking lot, right?
In the parking lot, yeah.
But there's only a small amount.
On the parking lot, on the right-hand side going up? Yep.
And what they're proposing is acreage of solar panels in three separate sections. And some of it might not be totally tree, but if it's not tree, it's on a hill.
Yeah, please, planning board.
It's not our first private property.
But is it, I mean, Joe, is this a bender permit issue? Is it as of right? Is it a planning board issue?
Probably not a board of adjustments.
It hasn't come to a planning board.
The zone for this particular property, but I would assume that it would have to be, at the very least, the planning board, if not the zoning board.
Know where it's at in the process? This is the first I've heard.
Yeah, we just got the plans.
Somebody invited me to the meetings in front of one of the two boards.
It's not a planning board yet.
Ray, have you?
Okay, I didn't say, "Ray."
How's everyone? Thank you for having me. Italy in January, and it's a Board of Adjustment hearing for a use for the solar panels.
Okay.
Second session in January.
Okay, so the citizens are notified. Should they have any strong position, anyone here?
People within, residents within 200 feet of the parcel, it's a large parcel, will be notified, and it'll be publicly noticed in the courier or the Star-Ledger.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. I know from being on the Board of Adjustments, we had solar panels before. One of the things that Dan Bernstein always told us is they've been deemed inherently beneficial, very difficult to stop. But in this instance, as Ed said, I mean, we're destroying an awful lot of acreage of tree property. I tend to agree with that. I think this is just a, I'm not so sure it's a wise idea, so I think we probably, you know, go and object if you feel that way. And Mr. Bernstein's going to have to decide, or the board's going to have to decide if they're going to prove it or not. And it'll end up going to court one way or the other, probably.
Okay. Mr. Fisher?
Just, I don't know if we should or can send a letter to other towns to inform it.
Well, I'm not sure what the impact is. That's going to be up to the presentation by their people from the planning board. Ray, would you agree with that?
I'm sorry.
I meant the zoning board. In other words, we don't know yet what impact. That's going to be dependent upon what the presentation is before your board, correct?
The Board of Adjustment has not yet received the packages formally.
Okay.
It will be sent out shortly, and there will be a hearing, and that application will be presented, I'm sure, by legal counsel and the applicant, and it'll be a full meeting. And a decision may or may not be rendered that evening. We have had some large applications that sometimes take multiple meetings before a final decision is made.
So any issue with respect to impact in any direction, okay, with respect to any other municipality, so on and so forth, that will be an opportunity to be aired at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And to Councilman Delia's point, yes, there is, there are solar harbors that are, I think there's a half a dozen or so that are available in the parking lot today. It was a concept that Union County had about five or so years ago, and it appears that the applicant does want to change some of the grade up there and provide solar panels on the grounds mounted, and we will cross that bridge when we get the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Michael?
Not in the disclosure. Yes, Mayor. As I mentioned at prior meetings, we're in the process of developing chronology and list of events with respect to affordable housing obligations. We're close to being at a point where we can release that document. It'll have the date, of course, the project we're talking about, the party that's responsible for undertaking the action. It'll describe what the deliverable is, and it'll have the source document that compels the activity. So that'll be, we're close to getting that done. We will make it available to the public, probably put it on the website. Everyone can see what's going on, and the process is going to be fast and furious as it relates to the different projects. Towards that end, tonight we have on the agenda the introduction of the redevelopment plan ordinance and the redevelopment plan itself for first reading. This really is a continuance of the settlement that was reached with respect to the 100 Locust Avenue property. It's the age-restricted development, 196 units, 15 percent of which will be affordable. In April, we took the initial action to authorize the planning board to undertake a preliminary study to see whether the area was in need of redevelopment. In May, planning board came back authorizing Harbor Consulting, Mike Mastrata, the principal that usually works on the projects for us, to prepare a map of that study area. In August, we adopted a resolution which designated the area in need of redevelopment. And in October, we settled with the developer of that property. That was part of our global settlement with Fair Share Housing Center and was brought before the court. And so consistent with that settlement agreement and the process, tonight is the actual redevelopment plan for introduction. What's important to note on that plan is it really sets the zoning for the property. So it creates new zoning, it dictates use, setbacks, things like that. It'll then get referred to the planning board if approved here. Planning board will comment on it, and will come back to us for second reading if all of that happens on or about the 20th. So this is the first step in that project post-settlement, and there'll be more to come on the others as we continue to proceed.
Mr. Fisher, you used the term "source document." Is that a court order? Would that be the court order?
It could be the court order. It could be the individual settlement agreement. It could be some other document. But since there's so many different operative documents and projects and deadlines, we want to make sure we're proceeding appropriately, and it's good to have it all in one place.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Kingsley?
Nothing.
Okay. I just want to make a comment towards one thing. The mayor's roundtable came out, and I looked at it today, and there was a mistake that was put out there with respect to, and it's a mistake in the fact that it was said, not that it's in practice. There was a comment with respect to zero-based budgeting, which we do, okay? And as I looked at it, I said, "That's not really what we intended to say." And I'm going to amend that now, and I'll provide some to the paper. Zero-based budgeting begins at zero, okay? Therefore, it's not a very difficult concept. We had some difficulty with it during our mayor's roundtable. We shouldn't, but that's okay. So we'll fix it now. It does not start from whatever a particular department had the previous year. So you're not going back to that spot saying, "Okay, they spent $25,000, we'll start at $25,000. We don't, we start at zero." That's zero-based budgeting, okay? So to the extent that there had been some confusion, or even those who thought it was a misrepresentation, that is not the case. Mr. Marceau, you can certainly confirm that we have been zero-based budgeting now for a few years. Is that correct? And I know Ms. Kingsley can confirm, since she was a major proponent of that. Is that correct?
Correct.
And I know that the chief is shaking his head, because it presents problems to the chief, as does the gentleman seated next to his left. So they would confirm that it's in fact a zero-based budgeting town. So to the extent that created any confusion, I apologize. And like I said, I'll remedy that with some form of a minor written something to the TAP, since they will be putting it out. Okay. Township council reports. Mr. Delia?
Just one little comment referring to your proclamation for Bob Miller. I think you missed one thing is...
Yes, I know exactly what you're going to tell me, Ed.
It was the last Republican...
Last Republican freeholder.
In Union County.
And that becomes a prehistoric situation.
For the record, I think it was '73.
Ed, I think you're right. So I'm going to ask, and I know that wasn't in here, but I didn't want to make a show, but Ed, you're right. And we can amend that, can we not?
Yeah.
Okay? Because it hasn't been put into any kind of memorialized. That's correct. And I don't even commence to do a contest in the over-under as to when the next one will appear.
Doesn't look promising.
Doesn't look promising. You're right, Ed. Anything? Mr. Fisher?
Just happy Thanksgiving to everyone, and just to put the town on notice. And I've already told the fire chief, I'm deep-flying my first turkey. So I've got him on standby alert. Never put a frozen turkey into boiling oil. I've got that. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Ms. Kingsley?
Just, I'll give my public service announcement. The beautification, the ornaments, the Berkeley Heights ornaments and magnets will be for sale Saturday, December 3rd, here at Town Hall with the arrival of Santa and the Winter Wonderland in the morning. And also that Saturday, you know, will be the tree lighting at Pepper Town Park at 5:00 o'clock, I think, followed by the winter walk, which is expected to be a lot of fun activities. There's going to be, you know, students from G.O. and all kinds of vendors, and so hopefully everybody in town is planning to come out and spend the day here in wonderful downtown Berkeley Heights. It's going to be fabulous. I think this is the first time we've met since the election, so I want to congratulate Peter Travasso and Manny Kudo, who are here, and welcome them, you know, to the council. You know, let's just say, either way, you win, when you run in this town. So welcome to the chaos. It will be fun. And I see John St. Haggley is sitting out there, and I just want to say, you know, you will be missed. You've served the Board of Ed for a long time, and you've been a really good ally and friend to the council, so you will be a big loss to the Board of Ed and to the town council, and we can't thank you enough for all you've done for the town, but we will miss you. Hopefully you will still come visit us over here at the council meetings. And with that, you know, happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you, Jane. I want to thank Tommy and Carolyn and the entire recreation audience for transforming our Winter Wonderland here. Thank you all. Last night I went to what is the 10th interfaith service. They move them around at various places in the area. This one's at Faith Lutheran in New Providence. It's, to the extent you can get to one, it's a rather unique time, various faiths. Come up with it, and they're represented. All appear, and each of the various religious leaders in that temple, church, mosque, whatever, all take part in it, and it's a nice event. And Al Morgan was there from New Providence, and I myself, so it was a nice time, and they generally have it right about this time every year, so you might want to remember that for next year. The winter walk was heavily advertised the other day in the TAP, basically setting forth everyone involved, and I want to thank everyone who was preparing that, all the local merchants and everybody that's getting involved. It should be a good time, so that's it. Mr. Biscicolo?
Did you just give Mr. Dacola?
Well, give me a look, Ray. You didn't have anything. Do you have anything?
No, just happy Thanksgiving to everybody, too.
There you go. Thank you, John.
All right. Township council reports. Let's go to our construction department first. We had 36 new applications, issued 83 new permits, 26 updates. 69 plans were reviewed. We collected total permit fees of $34,000. Color fees collected were $8,500, and there was a penalty collected of $1,200 on a property on Mountain Ave. From our engineering department, we've been working on the paths through town. I think you had mentioned that. I think Council President Kingsley mentioned that. We're working on the paths, trying to clear them. We're looking to eventually label them, so we know names on them, and if somebody got hurt, we get hurt, we know where they are, so they're identified. We've got three miles of paths that run through town, so it's pretty extensive. We were surprised when we actually took the wheel and ran over all, wanted to see what we had there. The transportation alternate grant application was submitted. We're trying to get the lighting on Springfield Ave, on the side going towards Long Hill up. What side is that? Is that the...
Don't ask me. It's the opposite side of Halls.
The opposite side of Halls. Thank you. Is that the north side? The north side. There's no streetlights there. I don't know if anybody's...
No power. There's no power.
And it's dark. So we're trying to get a grant to put streetlights up on that side. For Sacred River cleanup has been done. The additional snags have been pulled out. We're now in the process of arranging to get DPW, and they have a moment, to go in and pick up the debris that they've actually pulled out. On the Lord's Hotel Museum, we obtained the plans for the roof modifications to be done. We received the quotes, and we're working with the contractor to schedule the work to get that buttoned up, so we have no further damage to that building. We're also looking to update the report that was done in 2000 and prioritize future work. That'll be done in the next few weeks or so. Fire Department Heating and Ventilation, the engineer has completed the drawings, and Bob is reviewing the drawings now. I know we'll issue his comments. Looking for bid documents and plans. It's one week to go out. Street lighting at Heritage Square, we've got probably eight lights or so on Heritage Square that are not connected to the power grid. Those were actually connected to Heritage Square's power. The gentleman that bought the property went out and pulled the meter out. Now the lights no longer work. So I spoke to him actually yesterday. We're going to have JCP now come in and put the meter back, and it'll go on the town's bill. So those lights will get relit. If we don't have that done in time for the winter walk, I already spoke to Joe Lockley. Joe will bring a generator out and hook the lights up, so at least those lights will operate. We need to probably do some repair on them, too. Some of them look a little shabby, so we're going to have to do some work on those. I wanted to mention also, our fire truck is ahead of schedule. Tony went out there last week. They had to make some modifications to it, kind of where tools go and little changes. But we're ahead of schedule, so it will be done before the year. They had said not calendar year, but they'd given us 12 months. We'll be ahead of schedule on that. From our sewer department, we're still in the process of looking to hire a candidate. We have second interviews coming up on that. The trickling filter rehab, I'd like to just show, pass this around, and anyone in the audience is welcome afterwards to come and look at this. This was our trickling filter. This was one of them that we did. Here's the before pictures. You can see the water leaking out of the mast, and it's not supposed to do that. And these are the after pictures. What we've decided to do, the seeding process now is in process. What that is, is that on the rocks, there's also bacteria that grows on the rocks that has to be done. It takes about four weeks for that to happen. We've decided that what we learned from the first one, we thought we might be able to repair it, but they've been in there for 30 years, and some of, I think the other two are actually slightly older than that. What I think we're going to do is we're going to have the mast and the arms rebuilt totally. Just get brand-new ones. Don't fool around with waiting till we pull it out, judging that it's bad. They have to be as bad or worse than what we saw in the first one. So we're going to kind of do the next two a little bit different. Intermediate pump replacement, these are the pumps that we went out for bid. The bids were over what we had projected. We rejected them, and we're going to have to go back out. Right now, those pumps are still okay, so we're not pressed that we've got a worry at the moment that we're in trouble on it. Our sand filter, we actually did the repair work ourselves, and once again, I'll pass some pictures around. Our own employees actually did the work on it, which saved us money. They were actually in capital at the time. We did that ourselves. Our grease trap program, we're 100 percent compliant on our grease trap program. Tom goes out every Friday to go to all the businesses and check the grease traps. We had two that weren't ours, Noah's Bagels and Trap Rock. Trap Rock had to do some verification, they had to do some alteration on the plumbing, which they have done. We're just waiting for the results to be verified from the lab. So everybody should be in compliance. Collection system, we also started work on that. Hampton Drive pump station, this was a pump that went bad, and again, we actually, working together, we replaced the pump. Normally, we get somebody to cut out with the jib crane, pull it out, and put the pump back in. We ended up doing it ourselves, again, saving us some additional dollars that we'd have to put out. From our recreation department, obviously, as Mrs. Kingsley said, we're working on the winter walk. Thomas got, they've been busy bees on that. Santa will be here 10 to 1 in Town Hall, riding on his horse and wagon. 5:00 o'clock, we begin the festivities at Pepper Town Park, and then from there, we'll be here for the winter walk. Winter registration begins on Tuesday, December 6th, at 6:00 for the programs, and they will begin in early January. One other thing I wanted to bring up, hopefully people notice, we lit the trees across the street along the path, so... I think we told them it tonight, didn't we, Tom?
Correct.
They look really nice. We may have to add a few more lights to them, but at least somebody walking through the park, at least you can see where they're going now. And that's going to help us also during the festivities there. From our DPW, the street sweeper has been through section one and section two. We're going to go around a second time if the weather holds out. Yard race pickup, section one through five were picked up at least once, leaves only. Section one was picked up for brush. Section one through four, leaves were picked up a second time. We're working on section five right now. Once we start the sections again, all the brush and leaves will both be picked up. We did inlet repairs again. We did Russo place, ruckers, and green wire. All the town properties for fall cleanup have been done. Pepper Town Park, 911 Park, the First Aid Squad, Firehouse, Town Hall, Snyder, and Veterans Memorial have all been done once. Vehicle maintenance, we've put five of our stalkers have been installed for the coming winter. We did a major repair on one of the school buses for the Board of Ed. It turned out to be a project which the guys learned as we went. We actually were replacing the radiator. We actually had ended up taking the bumper off. we actually had ended up taking the bumper off, and basically, a good part of the bus had to be disassembled in order to get to the radiator, but again, it worked out well, our costs are gonna be much less than what they would've paid to go outside, and that's the goal there. Miscellaneous, as we talked about, the electrical is done in Pepper Town Park, we're making blind, we hung the Winter Walk banners, annual training for DPW, and the sewer department is being scheduled to be done, and we're prepping for the next GovDeals auction, we've got a couple items. One thing I did wanna show you, and Mrs. Kingsley saw this, what Joe has done down at DPW, on the items that we use regularly, liquids, windshield washer fluid, simple green, glass cleaner, vehicle wash, we had little bottles of it, what Joe did is he put drums in, and I'll pass this around, and they're hooked up actually to a control panel, so when somebody needs it, they just go in, they push the button, and it fills up the bottle. We buy them in bulk, it saves us a bunch of money rather than buying small quantities. I did get a letter also from New Jersey Transit, the memorandum of record, when they were out for the railroad crossing, so we do have that, they will be doing that starting hopefully in spring, gonna get a major renovation done to a railroad crossing. And I think that is it for the, one other thing, breakfast with Santa at Mount Carmel is December 11th, at, that's a Sunday, at 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. I'll hang this up somewhere, if anybody's interested in, you can see that, and I think that's it for the moment.
Okay, I just wanna add one thing, Mrs. Kingsley and I met with representatives of the Board of Education last week, this is the second meeting we've had, and the goal from the start was to see how we could work together on some things. One of the major topics was fields, and we spoke about what needed to be done, and so on and so forth, and Doug Einstein basically encapsulated what we had done, and Jean and I each have copies, and it's, they've been two very, very, very successful meetings, as far as I'm concerned, and there's an understanding, I think, as to working together, and so on and so forth. For example, the big field, it's the Columbia Field, behind Columbia School, which is a substantial field, and up to this point in time, we've been cutting that. There's a, there was an offer by the Board of Ed that perhaps that's something they would take over. If that's the case, it frees up, that's a lot of man-hours that it frees up, so, you know, we make decisions to buy capital, to make capital expenditures, such as machines and so on and so forth, based upon man-hours. So, they have, they've been very cooperative so far, and Doug has really made it a point to see how much we can do together, meaning the school board and ourselves. John, could you speak to the salt dump?
Yes, we actually had a meeting today on the salt dump, we had one of the manufacturers in, we're trying to figure out what will fit, you know, we'll put it all the way down to the very end in DPW, it looks like probably our best bet's gonna be 72-foot round dome, we're trying to figure out where the door needs to be, so we can get trucks in and out easily. We're gonna go out for bid, he's gonna provide us with drawings and specs, we aren't gonna go out for bid, because there's other manufacturers, to see if we can get a better deal on it. The only thing that we'll have to provide additionally is the base, we've gotta put down eight inches of stone and four and a half inches of asphalt before the dome goes on. The interesting thing was, in speaking to these people, is that they come in on a Thursday, put the forms up, they pour the round walls, they're called, we're either looking at six foot, we may go eight foot, because a 72-foot dome, we may wanna pile the salt higher, you don't wanna pile the salt against the wood. What they do is they put double rebar all the way around, so you can never push the wall out. They come in on a Thursday, pour that, come back on Monday, take the forms out, and in the rest of that week, they will actually build the dome. So we're looking at about a two-week period for the dome to actually be built, once we get to that point, then we're ready to pull the trigger and turn them on.
Okay, is Mr. Masretta running that project?
Mike is running that project for us, yes. He was here today, it was Mike Masretta, myself, Bob Aquino, and Joe Niocci. Again, it's important for our DPW director and Joe Niocci to understand where it's gonna go, where it's gonna look like, because we have to make sure we have turning radius and that type of thing. So we're still not settled, but we're getting much closer. And if you have no further question on that, can I just add one quick thing?
Sure.
We met with the seniors today, we had a very nice meeting with them, brought them up to date on what's going on, and I was, I took Anna with me, and also Nick showed up, and what was interesting, Nick said if there was any seniors that would be interested in maybe giving their input for communication, either website or whatever, and two seniors actually stood up and said, give me your email, they would like to participate, so we thought that was great, and Anna did a, did a great job, I mean, they just loved having her there, so it was, it was great. And next month, Joe's gonna go with me when we go in December, Joe Niocci from DPW.
They'll probably like Anna better.
I think that's, she had a meeting out of the Palmer right there.
Okay. Michael, can we do a motion?
Yes, I move that township council reports be accepted and approved.
Second.
Is there a second in discussion? Vote.
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Three minutes, Mr. Fisher?
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the Township Council held on November 1st, 2016, as well as the executive session minutes dated February 9th, 2016, as distributed be accepted and approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes, on the public meeting and abstain on the executive session, as I was not part of that meeting.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Yes, to the public meeting and abstain from the executive session, as I was not part of that meeting.
Good lord.
I move out in hearing on the agenda items only.
Second.
Is there a second in discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the hearing on agenda items only is open for a minute per resident, and Miss Kingsley is our timekeeper.
Tom, for your 14 dollars a vote, I was looking at your bill list, you got $7,113.40 of items related to Winter Walk, is that covered by donations?
Now, once, once again, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but you run that through the rec, and then, yeah, it's all from donations. No, that was all donations.
It's all donations, so there's no taxpayer funds in it, okay? And there's a $440 payment to Art Barber for reimbursed filing fees, what is that about?
That was for the Pepper Town Park, Mike?
The park's renewal, IRS filing.
Right.
The French string is a 501(c)(3).
But that's a charity, isn't it? How can you pay for, help out a charity like that?
Michael, is that?
We offered to do it, I mean, I thought government can't reimburse charities for things.
Mayor, I would recommend we remove that from the, from the bill list at this time, I would need to discuss that with the administrator and CFO.
Okay, but just, just to be clear, so I can understand it, this is for the park that the volunteers are going to raise money for, to save us money from repairing the park, we paid the filing fee to register it, so they could collect monies, I just wanted, just for the public to understand.
Municipalities cannot open or create a 501(c)(3) or any other type of corporation or can they fund it, through public funds? They can raise money for it, but they can't.
Okay, so, so if we want this to exist, someone's gonna have to donate before it's a 501(c)(3), and then, any others?
Yeah, whoever's the founders would have to come up with that money and then collect it to reimburse it.
Okay.
For fundraising, but yeah, that's barred by law.
Okay.
Okay, similar kind of question about this family number 5K raise, $500 communications committee, is that covered by donations? Yes.
Is it not, Michael?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
County of Two of Five Houston's Row, I have a question regarding Resolution 1, in which we're shifting money from certain accounts to other accounts. Mr. Mayor, if you had indicated we did zero-based budgeting, so I'm trying to understand how we could have over $88,500 that we didn't really need before, apparently, when the budget was developed, and that we now are able to shift because we won't need it?
Resolution 1 is the bill list.
Is it, is it 2? Okay, sorry.
Organizing transfers within municipal budget and reserves, that's your talk, not count?
Yeah, I mean, there's an awful lot of salary and wages that we're not funding, did we not hire people, did people resign?
Michael, you wanna respond to that, Michael?
Yeah, sure, basically, you know, obviously, things changed throughout here without problems, keeping staff at the sewer plant, that's why there's some ongoing money there. We had intended to fill some more positions at Rappaport, that didn't happen either, and our chief's been good enough to save us on some of it.
Okay, so this is money saved, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, all right, and then the O and A, do you know what wasn't, what this plan for that wasn't done?
Off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, seeing now, and I move to close the hearing on the agenda item.
Second.
Is there a second in discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delia, subject to the $440 deletion from your bill list, do you have a motion with respect to Resolution Number 1?
Yes, I move Resolution 1, approving bill list dated November 22nd, 2016, in the amount of $787.546.32.
Second.
Good math, Ed, all right.
Well, I had just a question for the vote. We're in the process of setting up escrows for Harbor for the various projects, I saw there were Harbor bills on there, I see basically all of them, although dated, some passed the settlement date, it relates to time prior to the settlement, how are you gonna make sure that it goes to the appropriate escrows when we get all these projects really underway?
Basically, myself and Connie Valenti, the planning board secretary, we work with the Department of Harbor, and we figure out what's an escrow bill and what's not. Anything not applied to an escrow, we handle, and then the escrow stuff.
Okay, so he'll know, because we've got so many of these going on at the same time, you'll create discrete accounts that can be charged back to the escrows. All right, thank you.
Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delia, Mr. DeCola?
Yes, and I move Resolution Number 2, authorizing transfer within the 2016 municipal budget and reserves.
Second.
Second in discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
I move Resolution Number 3, rejecting the bids received in connection with the wastewater treatment plant intermediate pumps replacement project pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-13.2A.
Second.
Is there a second in discussion? John, for what reason did we reject the bids?
They were much harder than we anticipated.
Okay, so we wanna rebid?
We're gonna rebid.
Okay, thank you. Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Miss Kingsley?
I move Resolution 4, in support of the clean water supplies.
Second.
Is there a second in discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Delia?
I move Resolution 5, authorizing the sale of surplus property on the state-approved online auction website, www.govdeals.com.
Second.
Second in discussion?
A little bit. There was two cars in there, a 2001 and a 2008, are they of any use that we can hand them down to engineering or something?
Car, where, where police cars, where?
I think, I have, John's leaving.
John?
You know what those two cars are that we have back there, is a 2001, 2008, I think one of the trans was gone.
Crown Vic? Yes, one was a transmission issue that wasn't working.
Crown Vic, yes.
Yeah, the other one was just very, very old.
The ones that were Crown Vic or something, right?
Yeah, I think they're both.
Yeah, they're both Crown Vics.
John, in your, in your opinion, they were not sure of any other use with respect to your department?
They're not there, no.
Okay.
As far as another department that, I think Don made that decision from the DPW.
Okay.
And, and we looked at our console, as if we replace the transmission, because of the condition of the car, we're just afraid we're gonna be put good money after bed, it just didn't pay, so it's in bad shape.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes, I move Resolution Number 6, authorizing the memorandum of agreement with the County of Union to memorialize the agreed-upon terms of the passenger vehicle under the seniors' in-motion grant initiative.
Second.
Question, a second in discussion?
Just, can you explain to the public that we're getting a, a new bus or something?
We're getting a 15-passenger van, with no cost to the town, probably within the next couple of three weeks.
Which is awesome. Nice.
Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Concern agenda, Mr. Delia?
Well, I move Resolution 8, authorizing the tax collector refund the following 2016 tax payment.
Overpayment.
Overpayment, that's correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Anna, would you please read the ordinance, first ordinance?
An ordinance of the Township of Berkeley Heights, County of Union, State of New Jersey, asking to redeveloping plant for the property identified as block 1901, Lot 35, located at 100 Lot 7.
Okay, Mr. Fisher? Do we, oh, we just first read, yes, first reading, yeah.
Okay, I move that the ordinance as read by the clerk be offered on first reading, that December 20th, 2016 be set as the day for public hearing, and that the clerk be directed to advertise Sein and the Courier News.
Second.
Is there a second, any discussion? Vote.
Mr. DeCola?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley? Yes.
Okay, Miss Kingsley, excuse me, read it if you would, please, Anna.
An ordinance of the Township of Berkeley Heights, County of Union, State of New Jersey, amending, revising, and supplementing Title II entitled Administration and Personnel of the Township of Berkeley Heights to create new chapter 2.95 entitled Pepper Town Park and Water Committee to create and establish an advisory committee to assist the township with the renewal, restoration, maintenance of the township and Pepper Town Park.
Okay, I move to open a public hearing on the ordinance as read by the clerk.
No.
No?
This is first reading.
No, this is.
No, it's final.
This is final.
This is final, I mean.
I'm sorry. Apologize.
Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
You have a second?
No. No, this is. No, this is introduction.
Okay, but it does say.
I just broke up the date, oh, I put the wrong date, sorry.
Yeah, that's why, okay.
Sorry.
So, go ahead.
December 6th would be the.
Is it not?
That's correct.
You write it.
You write the first time.
So are we December 20th on this one, too?
No.
6th. December 6th.
Third second reading.
So...
Okay. All right, so I move the ordinance as read by the clerk be offered on first reading, that December 6th be set as the day for public hearing, and the clerk be directed to advertise same in the Courier-News.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Any discussion?
Vote. I do have one second I want to bring up. Um, in the ordinance, just, again, not to pick on this one, but, um, selection of committee members of looking at, because right now it's 100% selected by the mayor, and, and same token, it says, you know, anyone removed from it is mayor or council or anything. It's something we want to look at, maybe something recommended by a mayor, approved by the council, or something along that lines.
I don't think you can do that, but I would indicate to every other elected official that if anyone brings names to me, I will certainly consider them. Okay? And I'll certainly let everyone, as I generally always do, let everybody know who I am apt to choose beforehand. I don't, I don't intend to change what I've been doing for the last two years. Vote.
Mr. De Colla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kingsley?
Okay, you want to speak up to begin, correct it?
Are you going to vote, Ms. Kingsley?
Is, is it, uh, was that correctable or not correctable?
There's nothing, well, it's, I don't understand the question. It's, the ordinance is drafted to be the mayor's appointment. Um, this is a self-created committee, so it can be drafted at any, in any manner. Um, so I don't know what you mean by corrected. I apologize.
No, but I think, but, I think we always heard our former government said we'd have to have it be just mayor appointment.
That's correct.
But what Joe was saying is, it doesn't have to be that way. Our former government doesn't, we could change if we wanted to.
On, on this, this is a self-created...
Yeah, it's a self-created committee, so it, this is not a planning board, it's not a commission, it's not a state mandated, anything, we could set if other we wanted.
It was a coup d'etat. You know, who would be selected. We'll talk about it. Okay?
I'm, I'm okay if we want to take a struggle. I'm okay with, uh, ordinance is drafted.
Okay. I'm just saying it's not a mandated thing, that's my...
Vote.
Mr. De Colla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Uh, where am I here? Anna, would you please read the next ordinance?
Bond ordinance amending section 3B, 3E, and 3H of bond ordinance number 11, dash, 2016 of the Township of Berkeley Heights, in the County of Union, New Jersey, finally adopted August 9th, 2016, in order to amend the description of the project.
Mr. Delia? I mean, Mr. Uh...
I'll do him on this one.
Same thing.
It's a first, it's a first reading.
It's a first reading.
And John? And John?
It is. I, first time, Delia. I move that the ordinance as read by the clerk be offered on first reading on December 6th be set as the date for public hearing, and that the clerk be directed to advertise same in the Courier-News.
Second.
Motion, second in discussion?
Uh, yes. First, there's, what is the, what's different since they were amended? Just right on amount, so...
Right on leaf blower?
I think we changed one of the things, right?
Yeah, it was a right-on leaf blower.
Yeah, yeah, I think we changed.
It, what happened, sorry, councilman, you're reading. What happened was, Joe got, remember we got the leaf pusher put on the front of the, uh, street sweeper? When, we weren't able to test that, we had to actually buy it, we brought it in, Joe put it on, it didn't work the way he wanted it to. We called the company right away, and they said, "We'll take it back, refund your money." So what he's going to do is he's going to reallocate that by a right-on blower, which is going to help us with all of our fields and properties, and not keep the pusher. That was one of the items. We don't want it to just sit down there and not get used, so we said, "Send it back right away and get our money back." The other, one of the other items was, um, the trickling filter. We were going to change that. We had, we had a different item in there, I think, at the time. Um, you can read that. There was a change on that, and also on the, the last one was a truck. We had a mason dump in there, we're going to switch that after we reviewed it to an F-250, I think Joe means, rather than the mason dump. Same dollars, we're not increasing dollars at all, but there's no sense in getting a piece of equipment that we now deem that we could use something, a different truck that would be of, of more advantage to us to have.
Oh, I, just for comment purposes, I have no problem with all the other changes, but the reason I would vote no is because I'm pleading again to not spend the $92,000 for the hook truck, which I don't know how much a new hook truck would cost, but it would probably be more practical to wait until we need a hook, or wait until another year by the hook truck fresh, and not spend $90,000 to convert the garbage truck. So that's why I'd be voting no.
Okay, but we did, when we went through this, determine that it would be cheaper to do this than would be getting a new one.
It's not a economical way to spend the money, being that the truck is older, where eventually we could use a new truck, and it won't be, everything that the new, the hook truck could do, we already can do with what we have, have, so that's why we're voting no on it. Thank you.
Okay.
Vote.
Mr. De Colla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
No.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
I move to open the citizens' hearing.
Second.
There's a second in discussions? Vote.
Mr. De Colla?
Yes.
Mr. Delia?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Citizens' hearing is now open, three minutes per resident, and Ms. Kingsley is our timer to do this.
Carol Matula, 5 Hastings Road, on the redevelopment plan for Locust Avenue, it's my recollection that the developer was paying for the redevelopment study, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because I didn't see that written anywhere in here. Is that in some document?
Um, it's, it's in, I think, a few documents, but, um, I don't think you put in the plan